The Vermillion City Council meeting scheduled for Monday, October 20th, 2025 at 6:00 PM will come to order. Katie Lee, call roll.
Toller, Lieber, Price, Holland, Jenna Wyans.
I'm here physically.
Jeezment, Murrah, Miracle.
Here. Will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes for October 6th, 2025 special meeting and October 6th regular meeting? If so, are there any changes or motion? Motion approved by Council Murrah, second by Council Holland. Any other discussion? Halls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post by saying nay. Minutes are approved. Adoption of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? If so, are there any changes or motion to adopt?
An approval of the agenda?
Motion approved the agenda by Council Price and a second by Council Lieber. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Agenda is adopted. For visitors to be heard, under visitors to be heard, persons addressing the council, please use the microphone at the podium. Please state your name and address. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard for five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. On each agenda item, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes to speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item and then public testimony will be closed and the topic given to the governing body for possible action. Only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda items unless there is unanimous consent to allow a member from the public to speak. Any questions from council members may be directed to staff or member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. Also note, there are a few consent agenda items. If any of the public want to address those items, we ask you also speak under visitors to be heard. At this time, are there any visitors to be heard on anything that's not on the agenda or any of the consent agenda items? Seeing none. First up, public hearings. We have a special daily malt beverage and wine license for the Clay County Agricultural Fair Association on November 22nd, 2025.
Clay County Agricultural Fair Association has submitted an application for a special daily malt beverage and wine license for a fundraiser event on November 22nd, 2025 at the Clay County Fairgrounds for each center. The notice of public hearing and police chief's memo are attached. The police chief's report states that while this is the first year for the event, Missy O'Connor and the fair board have successfully managed having this alcohol license in the past. The police chief spoke with Missy O'Connor and discussed safety measures that will be in place to help mitigate any problems. There is follows. The event will be held from 5:00 to 10:00 PM. There will be approximately 200 people in attendance. The only kids in attendance will be there to help serving tables. Alcohol will be served only at the bar and two to three employees will be checking IDs, issuing wristbands, and issuing wristbands to those over 21 and serving alcohol to those people. The city has received all fees and administration recommends approval of license.
Thank you, Nick. Are there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, the council for discussion? Assuming it says alcohol will be served at the bar, we're referring to malt and wine. I should realize we have a new topic on the agenda, so I want to make sure that's the one we're talking about, right?
Yeah, yep.
Motion approved by Council Holland. Is there a second? Second by Council Price. Any other discussion on this? Halls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Nick. Next up, we have a request for a variance to decrease required setback for abutting residential district from 20 feet to zero feet. This is in the area of the 16 High Street. Jose?
Thank you. The city received a petition requesting that the setback required when a business district abuts a residential district be reduced from 20 feet to zero feet for the construction of a mixed-use building that may use a foundation of the existing building. The location, as you mentioned, would be 16 High Street. This would be High West Main. This would be Court Trust Bank. This is 19 Brewery right there. The courthouse would be situated in this location. The existing building in question would be this large storage building. I believe that meat lumber used to store some of the lumber in that location or maybe some other construction material. The city council, acting as a board of adjustment, hears and decides on any zoning variances, zoning ordinance variances request, Section 155.100 of the zoning ordinances, what items may be varied and the process that needs to be followed. Prior to deciding if a variance is to be granted, the board needs to consider any public comment and review the following items. First of all, unnecessary hardship. In this instance, the applicant could be considering two options. First option would be to raise the building, the existing building and foundation to construct a proposed building. So essentially raising everything, including the foundation and putting a new building that would be a mixed-use building. The second option would be to remodel the existing building for the mixed-use as discussed already. The first option would require to meet the 20-foot setback, whereas the second option would not be required to do so since it's an existing building and would just be modified to meet all the building code requirements. Staff believes that the first option would create a self-imposed hardship in this instance since they would need to meet the setback. However, the second option would not require a setback since they would be modifying the building for the new use. Another criteria that the board should consider would be a literal interpretation of the ordinance would deprive the applicant rights commonly enjoyed by others. In this instance, literal interpretation would not deprive the owner of the use regardless of the option chosen since he would be able to have a mixed-use building. It's a matter at that point whether it's a size that he would like to have or not. Another item to be considered would be a minimum variance that's considered is needed. This is the minimum variance needed to alleviate the hardship. This would be the minimum variance that would allow the owner to construct a new building of the desired size. So again, that's something to keep in mind. Another item that the council or the board should consider is whether granting the variance will comply with the general purpose and intent of this chapter. Staff is unsure if granting the variance will negatively impact or affect the neighbors to the north. The existing building is already constructed or at or very near to the property line and a new building. If a new building is constructed at this location, it would not be any different than the existing one. The same can be said with the remodeling of the existing structure. Other non-conforming uses or structures cannot be considered. In this instance, since 2008, the city council has considered 11 variances, reducing setbacks. Three of these have been denied mainly due to the proposed use and location of the project. Another item to be considered would be the exceptional and/or extraordinary circumstances applied to this location. There are no exceptional or extraordinary circumstances that apply to this property. It's flat property. Its rectangular in shape is very similar to a lot of the locations in this area. Another item to consider is whether the board should attach any conditions to the use if the variance is granted. In this instance, staff does not recommend any conditions. In conclusion, staff would recommend approval of the variance to decrease the required setback when abutting a residential district from 20 feet to zero feet to either construct a new building with commercial units on the ground level and residential units above or to modify the existing building to provide the same. For the variance to be granted, there needs to be a two-thirds vote in favor from the entire board. That means that six out of the nine members need to vote in favor of the variance.
Thank you, Jose. Is there any visitors to be heard on this?
Good evening. Jim Peterson, Vermillion Chamber Development Company. I just wanted to talk on this property that we're looking at today. We did reach out on behalf of the contractor or behalf, we wanted to know to the property on the north. It's investment property, so we cannot contact that owner directly. But through the property manager, she did not hear back from him. He lives out of state. And then to the one on the south side is the brewery owners are very supportive of the project. Want to consider, think it'll really add value downtown. And then speaking on behalf of the Vermillion Chamber Development Company, we are, there really is only one location downtown for some other commercial businesses. We've talked a long time across different parts of downtown. It'd be nice to have the, in the general business district, commercial on the bottom and apartments above, so we're supportive there of this project. We know an investment here, the property tax would go up quite a bit, which helps the city and county. We know we get more sales tax from whatever business would go in there and believe it's very beneficial to us. If you consider allowing that contract, I'm sure he'll speak. But if he does reuse that foundation, it's really on that same footprint. It's just you get into, does he just remodel? But aesthetically appealing, it would be better, I think, to just do a new development on that same footprint. So I will leave it up to that. So we, hopefully you consider moving forward with this project for increased value of property taxes, sales tax, good use of the property facilities. There's enough parking back in there, could even help out, alleviate some other parking because this will be a better use. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other visitors to be heard?
Nick Mart, Mart Brothers Construction. I think Jim kind of summed it up, but you know, it's not cost-effective to start completely from new. Remodeling would probably make sense. In this case, you know, we think, we feel that tearing the building down to its foundation and starting with, you know, from the foundation up, aesthetically, it would be a, the city would have a lot better building in downtown if we started from scratch. The, our plan is to use as much of the foundation as we can. I'm saying we're going to build on the exact same footprint that's there with possibly some modifications to the footings if we need. So, other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you. Is there any other visitors to be heard? Seeing none, council for any discussion or questions? Council Holland?
Here we go. Jose, could you bring the picture back up?
Yep, sure.
The building that's there now, the back of that building or to the north of that, is that already at the zero?
I believe it is, yeah. The property line based on our GIS shows it to be here and the building to be right there. I do believe they're right on top of each other. I think that's just, the aerial is not correct.
So if you create, if you make a new building or use that one, the boundary will stay the same?
The property boundary would stay the same, correct.
So the reason for asking for zero is so that you can have the choice of doing either, is that right?
If I heard you correctly, yeah. Essentially, if he was, if you leave it at zero, then he could actually reuse the foundation or the existing building. Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, so basically, the building's sitting where it's at, we're just, because this is an older building, would be essentially allowing it to be in the same spot that it's currently at, correct?
Correct, yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. If he were to, if he were to essentially start fresh, he would, yeah.
Correct, yeah. Any other questions? Council General?
I just wanted to say that the brewery, brewery, oh my goodness, reached out to me and as Jim said, they voiced their support of this.
Council Price?
So just to clarify, so currently it is a business use and it's non-conforming because of the setback? Or it is conforming because it's a business use?
It's a business use that would be non-conforming because of the, how close it is. But that's also due to the fact that at some point the ordinance did change, making it non-conforming.
And changing it to a mixed use, it's still non-conforming because of the setback?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments? I think, I think Jim brings up a good, good point as well with the use of it having a, if they're going to do apartments with commercial down below, the aesthetic appeal downtown and assessed value will certainly benefit the area, I think, in the city. Council Lieber, you have more to add?
Well, just, I'm always concerned when we start changing little bits and little pieces of ordinances or variances or, or, how do you call it, blank here, land usage. We're doing one little piece at a time rather than the whole unit. But in this case, I think I would be okay with it. It's on the same foundation because it's already there. But if it was to be tear down and put a new foundation in, then I think it's going to follow with the current.
So if I may, if that's going to be, and I'm not saying you're doing this, but if there's a motion and let's say you were to make that motion, you would have to say that. You can't place conditions on this motion. So if that's the way that the council wishes it to be, then that's, that's the way it will be. But that's a condition that could be placed.
Council Murrah?
Can I ask Nick a question?
Sure can.
You said you'd be willing to use or you can use the existing pad there?
Yeah, our plan is to do the exact same footprint of what's there.
Okay, and then you said you would have to maybe modify the footings at all?
You know, there's one current side that's got a loading dock on it right now.
Okay.
That would be the only thing that would be modified. I mean, the height, the outline of what's there would not change.
Would not change, okay. That was my question. You mentioned modifying the footing and I'd forgotten about that.
Yeah.
Okay. Nick, I have a question for you real quick. Okay, I'll get one after you. I thought I saw on the application it was mentioned about parking. Is it going to help with parking? You guys having parking in there too or?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to comply with the, you know, whatever we end up doing for the residential parking above. And of course, you know, we haven't, we haven't completely got the plan done. There'll be parking for, you know, the units we have above, one and a half per bedroom or whatever, you know, complies and then we'll have parking in front of the businesses down below as well. So currently with what we, the concept we drew, to my knowledge, there's plenty of parking there.
Sure. I think that's an important thing because I know one of the biggest complaints are, because there's not enough parking downtown. It's out, it will help at least even the residences that are there to give them their own parking space where they're not utilizing.
Yeah, so right now, can you pull that picture back up that?
Yep. Yeah, go to, sorry, takes, there's a delay.
So right now, the, the way this, this property line actually is, we own about, I'd have to look, but I think it's 10 or 12 foot from what was their canopy, which I believe is this dark line. So this is our property line. So they have a cable fence there now that just serves as kind of a barrier. But all this will be parking. And this,
Okay.
this is actually like an eight-foot overhang. The building actually sits underneath that overhang, so parking's not an issue at all.
I think you might have answered my question there a little bit. I was wondering if that was going to be a share driver, if that's a private driver, public driver, but you guys own all that drive anyway.
Yep. And at least one of the thoughts was to maybe continue that drive to actually have an opening on this end. So it would just be, they could either use high street or the gravel alley. But that, that's a concept, I guess, that we have discussed. Yep.
I support what I see here. Any other discussion? Any motions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Nick.
Motion to accept the variance by Council Holland. Is there a second? Second by Council Murrah. Any other discussion on this? Halls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item we have is first reading ordinance 1547. This is to amend zoning regulations and conditional uses, mending for veterinarian or small animal use. Jose?
Thank you. So at the October 6th city council meeting, the city council considered a request for an appeal regarding the placement of a small animal vet use. This appeal was requested since staff denied the application because the use would be closer than 150 feet from a residential, residentially-used building within a residential district. After consideration by the council and denial of the appeal, the city council requested that the ordinance be amended as quickly as possible so that small animal vet uses were allowed as a conditional use within the GB, General Business District. The current ordinance places small animal vets, as I mentioned, as conditional uses within the GB district. Prior to being considered, as I also already mentioned, the use has to meet, or the application has to meet this 150-foot distance requirement. The proposal in hand would remove the distance requirement completely and not allow the kenneling of dogs outside of the building. This will remove the distance requirement and any future appeals to proximity to residential use. Administration and the City Planning Commission recommend that the city council advance the ordinance for consideration at a second reading to be held during the special city council meeting on October 27th. I would like, I would like to also add that the City Planning Commission just met at 5:30 today and they, as I mentioned, recommended unanimously, eight to zero, that the ordinance be adopted as presented. They did consider, one of the items that they discussed amongst other things was the fact of maybe reducing this distance as opposed to just eliminating the distance. But one of their discussions centered about how would you pick that distance? Is it 100 feet? It would just be an arbitrary distance at that point, similar to what we have now to some degree. And also the question about the safety of the kennelled animals. If they were outside, if they were barking, people could actually do harm to them. Other animals could come in into the, to the vet clinic. People could come into the vet clinic through the, the facility or whatever openings they had for the animals for the dogs to outside. So these were items that were discussed. But after all of that discussion, regardless, the planning commission did recommend adoption of the ordinance as presented today to the council.
Thank you, Jose. Is there any visitors to be heard on this?
Jim Peterson, Vermillion Chamber Development Company. On behalf of Vermillion Chamber, Dr. Green and the owners of the mall where this clinic wants to go, want to thank you for having this meeting, reconsidering the ordinance today and then trying to accelerate and move it through. I talked to Dr. Green. She's still very interested in the site, very appreciative of you considering it and expediting the process if it does go forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Jim. Any other visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. I know we discussed this in length last go-around. Is there any other further discussion? Council General?
I, I understand that the planning commission said that they didn't feel like a distance would make sense. But I think that I'm concerned about the way that this is written because I think there are, you know, looking at the zoning map, I think that there are a lot of places in town where another vet could consider going or that this vet could consider relocating that is not that close to a residential area. And I'm concerned that saying no outdoor kenneling at all for all of general business is, specifically for small animal clinics, is a little bit too far the other way. But I also know that we want to get this done as soon as possible because this, you know, we, we need a veterinarian in town for a lot of reasons. So I guess I just want to say that and I don't know if we can revisit this again later and talk about adding, adjusting the conditional use in the future. But I have concerns about this for the long term, but for this immediate need, I think that it's satisfactory.
My suggestion would be in that case, in the future, you could consider an amendment that would maintain some sort of distance requirement for outdoor kenneling and then make the no kennel operation an exception to that, stating that this type of facility could be permitted without the 150 feet if there's no outdoor kenneling and then maintain some sort of distance requirement for the other operations.
But being able to amend that at a later date is what you're saying?
Correct. Since this amendment is before the council now, rather than change it at this point when another veterinary operation would, would propose that, the solution would be to consider a tweak that would allow both options effectively.
I understand that. Council Holland?
The planning and zoning addressed this also, talked about, you know, this is not outlawing kenneling at all. And kenneling still has a requirement of 150 feet. So it has to do with a vet and so if they wanted to have kenneling and a vet, they'd have to have two licenses, one for the kenneling and one for vet. So we have not lost 150 feet as far as kenneling is concerned.
So I guess I'm, I'm not a vet. I have, I don't know exactly what the use would, or the situation would be where there might need to be an outdoor kennel, but I understand what you're saying. You know, like this is not for the kennel specifically, but it would be outdoor kenneling at the clinic. And I, you know, maybe that's the conversation that we should have later and, and look into if or when that would be a situation that needs to be addressed.
Any other discussion? Council Price?
I just want to thank the staff for their hard work in getting this done. I know we all sort of did a bunch of somersaults and turned it over upside down to make this happen and thank you very much for working on this. That's a dire need in town and it's going to help a lot of people, so I move approval.
There's a motion to approve by Council Price. Is there a second?
Oh yes, two advanced.
Oh, I'm sorry. A motion advanced by Council Price is a second, second by Council Holland. Any other discussion on this? Halls in favor to advance this second reading, signify by saying aye. Post saying nay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item we have is the consent agenda. Three things on the consent agenda today. It's the invoices, the annual write-off of old accounts receivable, and then also to declare emergency communications department equipment as surplus and to consider a resolution to transfer a 2013 console to the Peyton County for use. That is all the consent agenda items. Is there any council members that want to remove one to discuss further? Or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion approved by Council Lieber. Is there a second? Second by Council Price. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to old business, we have a second reading of ordinance 1545 to amend Title 15 land usage for zoning regulations. This is to change from NRC to an R1 property at 1200 West Main Street.
Thank you. So Mr. Tim Heiny and Ms. Julie Heiny, owners of the land, have requested that the city rezone their property from the NRC, Natural Resource Conservation District to the R1 District. Their property is on the south side of West Main, Kitty Corner from Stanford Street. It would be south of Bunions and just west of March Marine. They, their request is based on the fact that they would like to do an addition to the existing residential structure at that location and due to the zoning, the current zoning, they're not permitted to do that. So rezoning it would allow them to complete the addition to their residence. The city council held the first reading for this at the October 6th meeting. After public comments, the city council moved unanimously to advance the ordinance to a second reading, which is tonight. Since the first reading, the ordinance has not been amended at all. In conclusion, staff and the city's planning commission recommend the ordinance 1545 to rezone 1200 West Main be approved. This being the second reading, a roll call vote is required.
Thank you, Jose. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, any discussion by council? Motion to approve, second read by Council Holland. Is there a second? Second by Council Murrah. Go to their voting machines. Ordinance passes seven to zero. Somebody's lifting some heavy weights downstairs. Next item we have, first reading ordinance 1543, meeting Title 9. This is for the alcohol beverages, modifying eligible applicants for special alcoholic beverage license issued in conjunction with special events.
Thank you. On October 7th, staff and Vermillion Chamber and Development had an open meeting with current license holders and staff. The city staff discussed these licenses and current license holders agreed to have, to change specials. to change special dailies for current license holders to hold them. The ordinance that is in front of you allow, is, that's the only thing that has changed on there since, from the current ordinance, is to allow current license holders, so if you have a malt beverage license, you can get a malt beverage special daily license. If you have a liquor license, you can get a special daily liquor license. The second change that I had on the last one was to allow for on-sale liquor to be sold with these special licenses, and that is the only thing that I changed on this. So administration recommends that the city council approves the first reading.
Thank you, Katie. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. I know this was talked at length at the meeting, I know there was a couple members here as well that was at that meeting, and Katie explained her well. Is there any other discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So this does include where liquor can be included in the daily license if we grant it, right?
Only for license holders.
Only for license holders, not for the non-.
Not for other, to non.
For the charitable ones. Okay, good.
Yeah, so fraternities and organizations, correct, yep. Councilor Holland, are you?
No, it's okay. She.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes. Thank you. Move to the second reading.
Councilor Holland makes a motion to move to the second reading. Is there a second, or is there another, is there a second for the advancement?
Second.
Second by Councilor Price, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item we have is a resolution amending the fee for the on-sale full-service restaurant license. Katie?
So this was brought forward to you at the September 15th meeting, and we also had a roundtable event for the, on October 7th, hosted by the VCDC. The discussion that was held was that current liquor license holders have purchased their alcohol licenses for far more than the 70,000. Therefore, they did not want to us to decrease the price from the 95,000. Administration recommends consideration of the different comments offered on the adoption of the resolution, amending the fee for these full-service restaurant license to 70,000.
Thank you, Katie. Is there any visitors to be heard on this one? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. I just want to briefly, really quick, acknowledge and thank Jim and the VCD seat for organizing the meeting that was had, not only for the last one, but for this topic as well. We had several people from area businesses, we had three or four council members that attended, staff. The unfortunate part, and from my understanding, the invite was out to them, unfortunate part though, the restaurant owners that would be eligible for this, either were not able to make attendance or didn't make attendance, so we didn't hear any feedback from them at all in that. But it was pretty much well-stated that they weren't wanting to see this move forward at all, that we would just maintain what it is and reassess in the future if need be. Councilor Holland?
Unfortunately, I wasn't at that meeting. Was anybody in favor of 70,000?
No.
No.
Okay, that's what I thought. So what, how would we move this? Would we move to deny this, or?
I guess the easiest way is you either make a motion to deny, or you just don't make a motion at all, and it just stays status quo, correct?
That's correct.
So yeah, so a lack of motion would be the same as a deny. So is there any other discussion on this? Councilor Toller?
Jim, would you come up and answer a question? I know you're pretty excited right now. Has there been any interest in any potential restaurants coming to town that would, this would affect them or hinder their decision to come to town or not come to town if it's 70 or 95, whatever it is now?
Not that I'm aware of, not now.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me ask, let me ask our legal counsel this. If we make a motion, does that mean we can't revisit this in three months, four months?
You wouldn't be prevented from introducing a new resolution in the future even if there were a motion to deny?
So there's a motion to deny, there, I'm sorry, say that again?
You wouldn't be prevented from bringing it to, if there were a motion to deny today, that wouldn't prevent you from bringing it up. It's not something that, for example, was subject to referendum. So either way council wants to go, whether letting this die for lack of motion or making a motion, it's going to have the same effect.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. Councilor Price?
Two things. A response to Jay, that question was raised at the meeting, and a couple of the people at the meeting who are sort of on the higher level of food service, who have their liquor licenses spoke that it, from their perspective as restaurateurs, it wouldn't make a difference for somebody coming to town or not coming to town, that amount of change.
15,000 difference, wasn't it?
It wasn't, right. When you're looking at financing and purchasing something, but that's what they said, that was part of the discussion at the meeting.
So since that meeting, I have talked to both of the Mexican restaurants in town. They asked me about it, and they were disappointed. I told them to come to the meeting, but they aren't here, so.
Okay.
Oh, and I have a second thing.
Councilor Price, go ahead.
Is there a preference from staff or legal counsel whether it has a motion or dies for lack of a motion as far as procedure? Is there a preference?
I don't think there's a preference. I think the discussion would show that there was a lack of support versus sometimes we'll look back at minutes and it's inconclusive as to what happened and why it's hanging out there without a motion. So unless legal counsel has a different opinion, like there's a staff preference.
I think, I guess my preference is I'd just rather let it be for lack of motion, just because it says that we're still willing future, but not denying it, but at this point, not interested. Councilor Murrah?
Even if we deny it, we're still not saying we can't revisit it.
Right. I'm just saying the minutes then reflect that just a lack of emotion doesn't say that.
John just said that he would prefer it to have a motion, kind of how I, what I read.
No, I think he said the opposite.
Oh, okay, then I misunderstood that, sorry.
I'm with Mayor, I'd just as well, if council doesn't support it, no one make a motion.
Any other discussion on this? I'll make two calls, any motions? Going once, going twice. Item dies for lack of motion. Next item we have is a first reading of ordinance 1546. This is to amend the new address of the Vermillion Police Department.
I think they gave me the easiest item in the agenda to handle, so I was hoping to get it right. But we do have a spot in our city code which addresses where parking tickets can be placed or paid at, and it currently lists 15 Washington Street, so this ordinance would change city code to amend it to be 1250 Stanford Street. So by the time this goes through the motions will be in early December, so that will definitely be in the building by that point in time. We'd recommend advancing ordinance 1546 to the November 3rd meeting for a second reading.
Thank you, Johnny. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for any discussion. My only blatant question is, is it better just to say Vermillion Police Department and not list an address for recording?
It's going to be there for a while.
This is true. All right, all right. Councilor Toller?
Any idea when it's going to be open officially?
I think it is already.
Is there a number?
Last, I heard last week, they're looking at this Wednesday is when they might be able to move the 911 lines, so they're still waiting on that aspect of it to work out.
Well, we're selling all their firm shirts.
So we're giving it away right now. Motion advanced by Councilor Leiber, second by Councilor Price, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item is for bid board two. The big board, or Business Improvement District Number Two Board, has not had any new appointments since 2022. This, this board considers, particularly in reference to the downtown streetscape project, the downtown streetscape, legal counsel recommended that we maintain this board and meet on an annual basis, so long as those assessed properties are still being assessed for that project. Currently, right now, on that board is Michelle Maloney, Patrick Morrison, Becky Urquish Schroeder, James Waters, and Martin Pendergrass. They're all the current board members, and with reappointment, we would, I'm looking at maintaining the board as is, but staggering the terms so that way that when this does come up, we're not replacing all of them at once. So we look at Patrick Morrison to be termed expiring in 2026, Becky Urquish Schroeder in 2026, James Water 2027, and Martin Pendergrass 2027, Michelle Maloney 2028. We had some discussion on this, I know at noon, and that was the recommendations that the city staff had made, and I would conclude with those recommendations. So if not, I would take any visitors to be heard on this. Seeing none, council discussions on this. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for the board? Councilor Price?
I just want to thank these citizens for serving on this board in this important capacity that helped get the downtown improvements up and running and going and improve our downtown, and thank them for their continued service on this board as necessary, so I would move approval.
Motion approved by Councilor Price, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Genoine, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item of the Carr Street construction change order, Jose?
So North, North Carr Street was an existing north to south undeveloped right-of-way that commenced at West Duke Street and ended at Bauer Street. Prior to this year, this portion of North Carr Street was undeveloped and lacked any street improvements. On June 17, 2024, the city council adopted a resolution of necessity for the construction of this portion of Carr Street. The city council awarded the contract to Steve Harris Construction in February of 2025 to construct this section of Carr Street and being discussed today. The construction of Carr Street has been mostly completed already. The items that remain to be completed are grading of the boulevards and seating, as well as some cleaning up of some gravel within the road itself. However, during construction, several items have to be addressed in a timely fashion to allow for the project to progress. These items consisted of changes to the existing extension of a water main, adjustments of the vertical control prior to construction, modification of the grading at the Polaris driveway, adjustments of some of the quantities, and poor soils encountered at the site. The changes required to the contract, require the contract be adjusted by a total of $129,847.56. There is a table and memo with all of the breakdowns as far as how much it costs to do the vertical control, Polaris driveway, et cetera. One thing to note is that the largest by far item was the poor soils conditions encountered on the site. This was out of the 129,000 roughly, this was $92,000 of that, so about 70% of the total change order. This was a significant increase to the contract. The soil cement civilization that was used worked for the most part as it was expected. However, there were certain parts where the soils, existing soils did not take to the soil cement treatment. We waited the required time, which is typically a week, if not a little bit longer, for the cement to set, and these areas did not set. And when I mean we had issues, I'm not talking about that you could walk and you could see your footprint, I'm saying that you could drive a car or a vehicle and it would get stuck in the clay. They actually almost got the mortar grader stuck in when they were supposed to be working the soil cement into the soil. They waited a few more days, almost a week, and they almost still got it stuck again. So because of that, we actually had to go ahead and remove, I'm going to say about a third of the soil cement. We had to do an overdig in some, excuse me, some of these areas, put geotextile fabric there, and then we also had to put a ballast rock, which is oversized, three-inch down rock. So it's a pretty burly rock that we had to put in there, and then after that, then we had to put gravel. Once we did that, then the road actually worked with that repair. So that alone, as I say, that's $92,000. We had never, prior to this year, we really had never encountered issues with the soil cement, but as luck has it, then we actually encountered issues on Roosevelt Street as well. The issue with Roosevelt is that the concrete, they actually were able to, to work the cement with the grader, and they were able to scrape off a little bit of cement that was, or soil that was treated and mix it again in some of these bat areas. We were not able to even do that in, on Carr Street. It should also be noted that the work covered by the change orders, as I mentioned already, has been performed. This, this had to be done just to keep the project moving forward. Regarding the largest item in the change order, the poor soils encounter, different solutions were discussed between the city, the grading contractor, the soil cement contractor, and the geotechnical engineer. After a discussion, the options discussed would have been as expensive, if not more costly than the $92,000 being considered, and it would have also taken additional time to complete. This is mainly due to either reworking with the soil cement or having to purchase different types of materials such as geo grids, and that would have, if we would have used geo grids, then we would have still had to remove the majority of the soil cement. So there were a lot of items that we discussed on site between all four of us. The original construction cost of the project was $447,552.93. The change order will increase the cost to $577,449.49. The increase will not affect assessed amount to the property owner since the increases were to quantities paid by the city, so oversized items. The city will be using the STIP fund to pay for the project. Administration recommends that the change order, number one, be signed.
Thank you, Jose. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Council for any discussion? Council Leiber? Motion approved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holland. Is there any other discussion? Council Murrah?
Jose?
Yes?
This is all for him, isn't it?
Rename the streets, a different motion.
So? No, I'm not going to do that. I've heard the story of monster blocks having to be placed, is that included in this?
No, that is not included in this. It's actually going to be, so this here will be closing, if approved, will be closing out this project, and then the monster blocks, because regardless, that's going to be a an oversized item, would be considered that, that's going to be a separate contract. We are going to be needing to put monster blocks on both sides along the fence line, along the property line. There was an issue with, between the contractor, whatever, we figured it out. We also are going to be using some money from the VCDC, that's in materials, essentially a trade. So at the end of the day, that's probably going to be somewhere between 20 and 30,000 dollar increase.
That was my next question, how many and what's that going to cost?
So we're, we're working with a contract, with a different contractor, and what we're going to be doing is that we're going to be marking where we think the middle of the wall would be, and after that, then we're going to be there when he's placing the blocks, and as he's placing the blocks, and we'll decide if that's enough and whatever. So I can't tell you that's going to be, you know, $10,000 to the nickel, because I don't know how many blocks we're going to be using.
And then the next question, everybody wants to know, when will it officially be open?
So I, I would prefer opening it once the street, that once the boulevards start graded, once all the work is done by this contractor, that's when I would like to open it, because until that's, until this guy's done, then he's actually responsible for that street.
Okay, so and when is he coming back?
As soon as I tell him that the change order. As soon as I tell him that the change order.
So tomorrow.
Hopefully, yeah. I'll let him know tomorrow, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Genoine?
I'm sorry to ask you this, but I went back to the, like, previous agenda because I was curious, like, what? What the differences in the previous bids were, and I see that we actually had an alternate bid on this.
Yep.
Can you explain, I, I know we went with the base bid, but can you explain this to me again? The bid in the
In the bid alternate?
Yeah.
Alright, so, so the base bid was for the soil cement civilization, and the bid alternate was for using no cement, soil cement civilization, and then just digging essentially two feet out and replacing that with fabric and rock. So what we, that's the way that we have always done streets in Vermillion, essentially. So we did this a while back ago when we actually did Norbeck, where we had a comparison of what it would take to do the soil cement and what it would take to do the over dig. And this, that process of doing the base bid and the bid alternate allowed me to compare the two and actually pick the lowest amount. But because we did the soil cement and we encountered this issue, then I also have the quantities and the bid items to do the oversize dig outs with the rock and the fabric, and that's why we ended up doing that, because I already knew what those prices were going to be. Does that answer your question?
I, mostly.
Well, good.
It sounded like, I mean, when I look at the, what the bid alternate was, it sounds like that's similar to what the finished product ended up being. Is that, is that a fair statement? The, the subbase and the fabric?
So the, the majority of the road, about two-thirds of the road is still soil cement. The repaired areas were the bid alternate, essentially. That's what we ended up doing.
Okay, thank you.
There's a motion on the table to approve. Is there any other discussion? Halls in favor of the motion to approve, see if I'm saying aye? Post say nay?
Thank you.
Motion carries, thanks, Jose. Next item we have is resolution to amend the landfill disposal rates.
Just kind of a little background reminder that the city is a partner with Yankton and Yankton County and Clay County with operations with regard to landfill here, the recycling center here, and then the transfer station in Yankton. Joint Powers Board, which has all those different entities represented, plus some citizen representatives at their September meeting, looked at the costs that we have at the landfill and transfer station in particular, and in the needs that we have, both with capital items, as well as some upcoming improvements that we have to make. For example, we have a south landfill that we're going to be getting ready to close, and another one that we'll be opening up. As you see, as council members, those items aren't cheap. You also see where oftentimes we buy equipment with the landfill that we end up with a grant, and then a five to seven year loan with the state to help pay for some of that grant. For example, the Dozer that was around seven hundred thousand. So it is an expensive operation to run. And also, the landfill transfer station cover the costs, the operating costs for the recycling center here in town, which does not make money, so the landfill transfer station end up subsidizing a good portion of that. We looked at those increased costs, the last rate increase that we had was in two thousand twenty-two. And looking at that, we thought it was better to bring forward to both governing bodies a multi-year rate increase, starting the January first of twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, those respective improved, a cost per ton, or seven dollars a ton for twenty-six, five, and twenty-seven, and three, and twenty-eight, three dollars. Yankton City Commission did approve this at their meeting last week for the transfer station, and this, this happens before you for the landfill rates. Of note is that the rate difference between here and Yankton is ten dollars a ton. We do that as we recognize there's handling costs to receive the waste to the land, the transfer station in Yankton, and then to truck it over to the landfill. That, back in twenty seventeen, we had a rate analysis done that recommended a ten dollar difference between our rates. And so that has been that way probably for about five years. We worked our way up to having lower rates here, so to speak, per ton than what they are in Yankton to reflect that difference. With that said, we'd recommend approval of the resolution revising disposal rates at the landfill for twenty, two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, and two thousand twenty-eight. And then also, the minimum fee is also part of that. Currently, it's twelve fifty, this would increase it to fourteen dollars.
Thank you, Johnny. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, counsel for any discussion? Counsel Genoine?
The resolution, it doesn't show minimum fee for twenty-seven or twenty-eight. Should that carry to fourteen, or does that go away? I can't remember.
I believe we just were increasing it forward to fourteen dollars a ton, effective January first, twenty twenty-six, and then changes weren't proposed for either twenty-seven or twenty-eight. So we probably should go back and list that for, that's not a bad idea to have the minimum fee listed for each one of the years there. We wrote that one from the standpoint of showing an increase, but we can certainly do that.
So just to clarify, so those minimum fees would not change for twenty-seven or twenty-eight?
Correct. That's correct.
Any other discussion? Is there any motions?
I move approval with the minimum fee adjustment, or like clarification, as discussed.
Motion approved with that clarification and a second, or by Counsel Genoine and a second by Counsel Holland, any other discussion? Halls in favor, say if I'm saying aye? Aye. Post say nay? Motion carries. Next item we have is water treatment plant improvement bid opening.
Thank you. So back in twenty twenty-two, a facility plan was performed for the water department that focused on the aging infrastructure within the water treatment plant, as well as nearly a mile of water mains, aging water mains out in the distribution system. That plan was presented to the public in December of twenty twenty-two, and a loan application was submitted to the state in early twenty twenty-three for that project. In March of twenty twenty-three, we received a seven million dollar S R F loan for this project. And in August of twenty twenty-three, we entered into a contract with Banner Associates for the engineering services in the amount of six hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars for that project. And that project was separated into two separate task orders. One of them, which focused on the treatment facility, was task two, and then one, the distribution system, was task three. The distribution portion of the project was completed in twenty twenty-four by Holstein Construction in the amount of one million two hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred and one dollars and twenty-five cents. The engineering on the treatment plant upgrades was completed earlier this summer, and plans were sent out and approved by the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources with the state of South Dakota. Following that approval, the project was advertised twice, as required per state statute. The project was split into a base bid and a bid alternate. On September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, we received an open for bids. The low bid, low bid was received from RP Constructors LLC from North Sioux City, Iowa. The base bid was in the amount of six million one hundred and three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, and the bid alternate was in the amount of two hundred and ninety-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. Banner has reviewed the bids and submitted a letter of recommendation, which was included in the packet for your review. As I said before, the city did receive a seven million dollar S R F loan to cover the cost of this project. Counsel has already adopted a rate structure to repay this debt. Out of that seven million, roughly one point three million of this loan was utilized to pay for the distribution improvements that was completed back in twenty twenty-four. Additional funding will be required to cover the total cost of this project. We are currently looking at options to cover that additional cost. With that, administration recommends the city council award the water treatment improvements project base bid to RP Constructors LLC in the amount of six million one hundred and three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, and to reject bid alternate number one.
Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, any discussion by counsel? Shane, are these the same guys that fixed our pipe for the flood?
They are, yep. They're the guys that did the four mains for us, yep.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
I'm already excited.
Yeah.
No video this time. And I'm, I'm pleased to see that it's coming in under what we expected to.
Well, it's a little bit higher than what we expected.
I thought we said seven mil.
Well, that was, that included both the distribution and the water treatment.
Okay, I'm not as excited now.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? There a motion? Motion approved by Counsel Murra and a second by Counsel Genoine? Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Post say nay? Motion carries. City manager's report?
Just a couple of quick items here. The next city, regular city council meeting is on Monday, November third. Two meetings before that, one is your tree board meets this Wednesday, October twenty-second at nine-thirty in the Powell Conference Room here at City Hall. And then next Monday, October twenty-seventh, you have a special city council meeting. It sounds like noon was going to work for the majority of the members, and so that will be the second reading of ordinance fifteen forty-seven, which was, if I may say, the vet ordinance that you considered earlier tonight. So special meeting next Monday at noon for a second reading of that. Just a reminder, the V C D C's Downtown Trick or Treat Event is on Friday, October thirty-first. Church Street from East Main Street to Kidder Street will be closed from three-thirty to six-thirty P M for that event. And then included with your packet were two raffle notifications. One is the Clay County Agricultural Fair Association. They're going to be selling raffle tickets at a price still to be determined, but won't exceed ten dollars. It's essentially a fifty-fifty drawing with the proceeds going for facility improvements at the fairgrounds. The sale date is in November twenty-second. That was the item Nick Doty presented to you earlier tonight with regard to the special daily malt beverage and wine license. And then U S D O T Chapter Phi Theta Epsilon. They're selling raffle tickets at one for three dollars, or two for five dollars. That began October thirteenth, runs through November ninth. The prizes are the five different baskets that vary in value from ten to twenty-five dollars, and they're hoping to raise a thousand dollars, which they will donate towards Saint Catherine Challenge, which funds research and interventions with occupational therapy. That's all I have.
Thank you, John. That's all I have. Is there a motion adjourned?
I like it here. Move to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Counsel Holland and a second by Counsel Leiber. I had two parents that were looking at me on that. Alls in favor, say if I'm saying aye? Aye. Post say nay? Motion carries for adjourned.